Fairness. I will go ahead and call to order our October 23rd, 2025 City of Longview City Council meeting. Thank you guys so much for being here. Our first agenda item is a prayer and pledge which will be led by Ms. Charlotte Davis. Charlotte is the Chair of the Longview Thanksgiving Food Drive Board, which is a community effort to provide Thanksgiving food boxes to more than 1,000 families each year. This effort is made possible by generous community donations and is done in partnership with local nonprofits as well as support from Brookshires and Super One Foods. If you would please stand.
I do want to make comment that this is our 40th year. We are very happy to have served the community for 40 years. Shall we pray? Dear Lord, we want to thank you for this beautiful day. We too truly want to bless these guiding people that lead our community and have us where we can live peacefully and have all the blessings that we are that you have blessed us with. Thank you for these these community volunteers that are here that volunteer for the food drive and for all that we have to bless our community people. We ask it all in your name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Next on our agenda is a presentation and recognition, recognition, excuse me, of our participants in the inaugural Longview In View program. I see a bunch of you guys here tonight wearing your T-shirts. Longview In View is a program that was created with our city manager, Assistant City Manager, and Mr. Richard Yakeley, who is now Assistant to the City Manager. And that goal was to provide an avenue for interested citizens and residents to get more involved and knowledgeable about our city. Here at the City of Longview, they are running a major business, major organization with 100 million general operating budget, 900 employees, and lots of different divisions. There's more that we could learn in any short period of time, and there's a lot more to know than I know. So, thank you guys for the time to commit, to be here, to learn more about your city, know how it works, so you can be involved and help us make it the very best organization that it can be. So, I want to celebrate the commitment of time that you had to making your community better and thank each of you. Those participants, we had 25 in our first class. They met for 10 sessions over five months, met with various departments to get a closer view of how the city worked, which included a meeting with public safety, parks, tourism, development services, finance, public works, and many more. Our next class of applications for next year will begin November 3rd with applications being accepted through December 5th. I am going to recognize and ask you guys to come up so we can take a group photo with some of us. Jason Brannon, Art Carter, Mallory Dodd, come on up when I call your name, come on up. Mallory Dodd, Sharon Fowler, Kami Herrera, Denise Howell, Grace and Ty Jackson, Drusilla Johnson, Timothy Johnson, Kimberly Kaiser, Monica Lippman, Chriselda Marquez, Barbara McDaniel, Lacey McCray, McCree, sorry, Lacey, Mike Middleton, Johnny Ottley, Danielle Pretty, Mitch Randall, Elizabeth Ross, Darren Rudolph, Whitney Schubarth, Shanitra Shaw, Amanda Vizi, and Toisha Walker. And then if anybody involved in the class wants to join me up there, Roland, Mary Ann, Richard, I know that'll include you. Our class has gotten certificates of completion plus T-shirts, and we just want to celebrate the time that you've invested in getting to know the community to make us all better. So, you're in the front. Closer look at the view is what it says? Perfect. Good. Okay. Thank you guys so much for being here. Next on our agenda is a municipal court update. Ms. Bonnie Hubbard, our Director of Administration.
Good evening, everyone. Am I running it or you? I never rearrange that. I'll take care of it. Okay. Sorry about that. Good evening, everyone. I am here to provide just a brief overview of municipal courts as well as inform everyone of an upcoming event and some changes that we will have. Maybe I'll run it. All right, Caitlin, it's all you. Okay. Just a disclaimer that municipal courts handles all the violations, Class C violations, just for City of Longview. I cannot speak to anything of Gregg County. But any violation that is issued handled through our court system, we send all kinds of communications out, assuming that we have all the correct information for a citizen. Sometimes those communication may not be sent, and those can lead to a warrant. And I realize that is a program that we are not advertising as well, so I do want to focus on warrant amnesty. Texas does not have a required program. It is at the judge's discretion, and our judge does offer this program. We currently run it January 1st through April 30th of every year, and what this does is allow a citizen to say, hey, I need to get this resolved. We immediately drop all warrant fees and the warrant process. So, if before they can come before the judge and they are pulled over, there will be no warrant on file, so they will not get arrested for that warrant. They can then come to the courtroom, have that warrant resolved with, again, warrant fees will be dismissed, and up to a 20% discount on the original citation. And I do want to note that at any point a citizen has a warrant and comes to courts to resolve that, it is a safe harbor, there will be no arrest. And this can actually happen at any point throughout the year. And if we'll go to the next slide, please. On our municipal court page, there is a platform where anyone can search the City of Longview database for a Class C violation. And, nope, you're good. I didn't get our codes down. So, on there, you can search cases. That is where you can search for all citations. If it has gone to a warrant, it will be read, and then that individual will know that they need to contact our courts to have that amnesty program take place. Once they call the court, we will, again, immediately drop the warrant and place them on a docket for them to come forward before the judge. You can also search for upcoming dockets, so you can see when am I even supposed to be there, except for juveniles. Some upcoming changes we are making is, again, we do communicate with citizens once the violations are in the court staff hands, but we will start placing QR codes on the violations themselves, so citizens can see one of 10 ways that they do have an opportunity to get this resolved. And beginning November 3rd and the first Monday of every month thereafter, we will be having evening docket. So, this is the time you can come before the judge for whatever reason. So, now we've learned we might have a warrant. I didn't know what to do, come to this court. I can't pay, come to court. I had childcare, I couldn't come to my original court docket, come to court. November 3rd, I'm not trying to make light of that, it's just how easy we want to be available to our citizens. Again, November 3rd check-in will be at 5:00 PM to 6:00 PM, and they will be there until all the citizens are resolved every Monday evening for anything that someone may need. And that website there, on our website backslash Amnesty Docket, will explain more about that evening court. It also coincides with National Municipal Court Week, and on November 7th, we will have Coffee with Court, so anyone can come out and have coffee with court staff from 9:00 to 11:00 AM. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
I think Mr. Allen has a question.
This evening docket, is this just for a short period of time, or will this be continued?
It will be continued.
Thank you. That's good. Yeah.
Thank you. And I just, I appreciate the willingness to look into that, especially for our City Judge Terry Jackson, who is obviously going to be at that night court, offering that option. I think it's really great in, if I say something wrong in my summary, please correct me, but we hear from a lot of residents who want us to have safe traffic, you know, speeding, red lights. That's something that I know a lot of us hear as feedback, and so LPD has increased traffic enforcement. And so, if I were a resident that got a speeding ticket and just, you know, threw it away, what results is, I have a warrant, so if I ever get pulled over again, I get arrested and taken to jail, and that's obviously not what anybody wants. So, now, if I were that resident, I can check online for any city citations, and I have the ability at any time during the year to come take care of that. So, I think the message from the city is, we want to help take care of those things as opposed to be penalizing people in any way.
Absolutely.
Go ahead, John.
Thank you. I have a few questions, Bonnie. So, this amnesty, that's great that we do that, and we have the different things as far as the fees dismissed and the discounts. Does this promote them to kind of go to that amnesty program, though, instead of satisfying it prior to?
Well, we technically offer it all year. So, again, at any point, if someone discovers they have a warrant, they can call the courts, and we will try, work with them to get that resolved. The amnesty program is just something that the news media will pick up for us and advertise. It's at the judge's discretion as a way to highlight, let's come get those warrants resolved.
Okay, so they don't have to wait for those?
No, and we encourage them not to.
Okay, so, but they can just always inquire about the amnesty, like you mentioned on the website, stuff like that. The other part of it, let's say they do the amnesty, and they schedule the appointment, so therefore they're no longer going to be arrested for that warrant, and that then they don't uphold their appointment, just as a way of kind of not having to worry about that at that time period, and then rescheduling again. Is there any sort of process in place to that, if there's any, like, repeat offenses to not upholding your appointment for warrants?
If they continue, if they keep in contact with the court on to, you know, maybe I don't have transportation, whatever the issue may be, the court will continue to reschedule them. If they no longer maintain contact with the court, we start, pick up our communication efforts again. Our court officers will go to and remind them of their dockets, not to arrest, but just to remind them. And at some point with no communication, there will be a warrant issued.
So, it's at court's discretion, then there's not a certain policy or procedure in regards to that?
Well, they do have a timeframe in which communications are issued, and I believe it's after 45 days of no contact from the citizen is when the warrant process will start.
Okay. And then the safe harbor thing is also very interesting. I didn't know anything about that. So, is that a state of Texas thing, or is that a City of Longview thing that we do?
The warrant amnesty is not a Texas program. It, if we have a warrant amnesty, safe harbor is automatically issued. And so, it is at a judge's discretion, which, again, Terry Jackson does promote the program.
Awesome. And, okay, great. I appreciate y'all bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments? I think I want to say something. Go ahead.
Curious to see this night court. Keep thinking about the TV show Night Court.
We've talked about that, yes.
I would just like to say, I appreciate, this was a collaboration. Ms. Moore asked for some attention on this issue, and Chief Boone and you met and came up with this plan. We got some feedback at our In View class, which I think is really great. Sometimes individuals that receive citations don't have a good mailing address or don't have, so the QR code is intended to be an option so that they know how to address that ticket. And then also, as you've mentioned already, we're only doing city, not other municipalities, so we've highlighted that on the website, so folks know they also need to call Gregg County. We're only in charge of the ones that we're in charge of. So, thank you, but that's good, it's good teamwork. So, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is citizen comment. I do have two speaker cards. Ms. Brenda Woolridge, you're up.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brenda Woolridge. As you know, I reside at 2217 South 13th Street here in Longview, Texas. And I wanted to get up and thank the people that were sent to my house to address some concerns about South Longview. And it was three different departments, so it was no way that we would go be able to address all of that with three different departments and one of me. And, but anyway, I appreciate the effort. It meant a lot. And so, the street personnel came by, and he fixed a part of the street next to the drainage. He had it fixed, well, he told them to have it fixed. And when they did, they fixed it with asphalt when it should have been concrete, but they corrected that. So, I appreciate that. Mr. Evans also, he addressed the area where we didn't have a sign to let you know that you was going around a curve, and which a lot of people have gotten hurt in there. And another thing was there are multitudes of brush that need to be addressed in our neighborhoods, and not just from Swept Cold, this was from the storm last year. And the next thing was, okay, this, what's today, this Thursday last week, Mr. Greeney Braves of the Code Department came by, and we got in the car and drove around the neighborhood, and we got several houses and addresses that need to be addressed. And as of this morning, they were out doing what they were supposed to do. And I'm very proud of them, but I know that they need help. It'd be awesome if they could get another employee to help them with what all they have to do, because South Longview is huge. It's old, but it's huge, and a lot of people don't have the means to keep their place up, you know, once it's down like that, especially senior citizens. And, okay, the building, I just learned the name of Development Service, Developing Service, it is not developing. That, that place, I was shocked to see the condition of that building. You walk in, the floors were filthy, all back in there were filthy. It's not a place for someone to work. I know we have built the new police station, we've remodeled other things, but that building, the way I've notified is that's the code building. It looks awful, y'all, and we need to do something because it's not fair to those employees to work in that condition. And I appreciate everybody for what they've done, everything, we're beginning to get more done. I thank Mr. Mcfee and all that have done what they're supposed to be doing, and they don't have to do it just because you have an office don't mean you do your job, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Woolridge. Next speaker card I have is from Darren Rudolph.
Good evening. Darren Rudolph, Longview, Texas, South Side of Longview. My elected official is Ray Wade, who's doing an awesome job. Want to commend him for a job well done. I want to address this, I want the City of Longview to know, Longview came in with Longview in the view. Y'all presented that, and that, that vision came from Richard, and we want to thank you for that vision, Richard. We made presentations already, they told me I can't come up front, so they already gave y'all, y'all trophies, and I want to say, thank y'all for what y'all have taught us in that class. We the class of 2025, we the baddest class. We the first class, and we your baddest class. And we want to, I encourage everyone, what if you have a problem in the City of Longview to attend this class, to learn more about the City of Longview. Some things I had problems with, and I'll just be honest, I had problems with some things that was going on with Longview Police Department. But I was able to attend that class and learn some things about Longview Police Department. And it wasn't that Longview Police Department was wrong, it was me wrong, because I was going, not coming to the bright people, and I want to apologize to Chief, because sometimes we hear things, we're ready to attack, but we need to just go ahead and start trying to find out what the real problem is. All right. May the Lord bless you real good. This is our prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Rudolph. I do not have any further speaker cards. Would anyone like to speak and fill out a speaker card after? Not, I will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that council would like to pull off for discussion or questions? Mr. Allen, which ones would you like?
I and J.
I and J. Anybody else? That's you, Mr. Dwayne Archer.
Yes, sir.
On item I, on the truck, I know it's, the description is a combination vacuum jetter tandem truck. Would you, well, good, you got a picture of it.
Got a picture of it right there for you.
Would you tell us what it does?
This is used for cleaning out sewer mains, it takes care of hydro exhumation when we're doing that kind of work. It's used for storm inlets, different things like that. There's some areas at the pump stations or the lift stations that we use it for, but it's a powerful way to actually clean out lines fairly quickly. Yes, sir.
About how long would you, this is a new unit, about how long would you estimate its lifespan is?
About 10 years.
10 years.
About 10 years, yes, sir. And they're used so often, and it's one of those pieces of equipment that you just need in our, in our kind of operation, and so, yeah.
I've seen, I've seen the one around town that we're currently using. I don't think it has the orange sign on the side of it, but it says Water Department, and it's, you see it around town fairly often.
Yeah, yeah, we've got a couple, yeah.
Okay. The reason, because it's 515,000, that's a half a million dollars.
It is an expensive piece of equipment, yes, sir.
Yeah, it's, and also, okay, thank you, on item J, on, excuse me, documents with northeast, with the MRF, the recycling, the recycling facility over in Kilgore, I thought we already had a contract with them.
We had a temporary contract, but this one, now that, now that that contract has expired, we need to go ahead and enter into a new one, and of course, that's when they requested that we have a contamination number in there of 150 per ton. And so, that, that's included in this contract.
That's included in there.
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is previous, when are we going to start doing the pickups? And I know you mentioned this last, when are we going to, when are we going to start doing, excuse me for speaking up back, when are we going to start doing the separate pickups for recycling and trash on different days?
That'll be the week of November 3rd.
November 3rd?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there any, any public notice other than just email or something on how we're telling the people of what we're going to do starting then?
Yeah, we, we have tons of communication. The Communication Department has been doing lots of work, making sure that that word gets out, that everybody's aware of it. So, it'll be, it'll be important. It'll be an ongoing effort, though, I'm sure even after we get started, we'll continue to work that, so making sure that everybody understands that it's the day after and also what items that they can recycle.
No, I think that'll help us tremendously in our program and make it successful.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other items on the consent agenda, or do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Consent, nope, consent agenda is approved. I will move on to action items. Action item A, consider a resolution authorizing an MOU between City of Longview and Community Health Corps for two qualified mental health professionals, 100% grant funded. Ms. Laura Hill.
Good evening, council, Mr. Mcfee and Mayor. Tonight, we're asking your approval to approve a memorandum of understanding between the city and Community Health Corps for us, for them to hire two qualified mental health professionals that will then be seconded to the city to work with our partners in alternative community care, our PAC team, which is comprised of our post officers, our Community Health Department, and then these mental health professionals, and they go out on calls to intervene in crisis situations that have a behavioral or mental health need. So, and this is just for you to approve the MOU. It's part of a grant. The grant fully funds both positions, but because of the cost, we need your approval.
Will you talk about what we're doing now with that team, and if that will increase what's happening with the team, or what's happening now?
Right now, for several months, Community Health Corps has been loaning us a person at their expense to work out all the kinks, and now that we've done that, they go out twice weekly, Post and everything, and you're going to hear some good news about Post in a moment, then this will solidify that arrangement and allowed it, allow it to expand.
Wonderful. Good. Questions or anything for Ms. Hill? Go ahead.
It's not a question, I just want to say thank you for what you do on these grant funds. It's amazing, we're just going over the consent agenda here. You know, there's money out there, but you do an excellent job of applying for it and receiving it. I just want to say thank you.
Thank you. We have a great team, and it does involve every single department. I don't let any of them get out of the.
Good. Well, and I just, I think this is so important. It's a really important aspect of our mental health response that our team is able to address that initially, because a field officer from LPD can arrive, and the only choice is our jail or the hospital. And so, a trained mental health professional can address in the field and meet the need where it's at. So, the goal would be to expand services to be greater than that time, and so, this is a really important step in making that happen. So, thank you very much.
It is a relief on emergency rooms and the entire other part of the system, so it's an intervention.
Yep, and a better result for all involved.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I do need a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
And a second.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Action item is approved. Thank you so much. Next, action item B, consider an ordinance amending the city's budget for fiscal year 2526 by allocating awarded grant funds in the amount of 250,000. I'm going to let you finish the rest of that, Chief Boone.
There we go. Good evening, Madam Mayor, council, Mr. Mcfee. Like you were saying, action item on approving the COPS grant with the budget amendment, and I'll get into the numbers just here in a second. There we go. So, Post, I want to talk first about Post, and this will all tie back together, and it also goes with what Ms. Hill was just talking about as well. So, Post was created in 2018, January 2018, and we started with two officers, and we still have two officers in that position. So, they basically, they serve unhoused individuals and people with having mental health episodes as kind of, or issues, it's kind of grown from just unhoused originally. And some of the duties you'll see there include the state ID program. That's basically where if somebody has no form of identification, and if we can prove who they are, we can give them a, a city issued, a PD issued card initially, they can take that and then go get a, an updated ID card with the state of Texas at the DPS, the local DPS office. And once they have that, now that they have something where they can go get a birth certificate, now when you have those two pieces, now you can go get your social security card, and we find that a lot of individuals have the means to be receiving some type of benefits, they just can't prove who they are, and so, that kind of helps with that. Homeward Bound, that's another one I'm also proud of. We do a very good job of this. We make sure, there are some people that get stuck in Longview, and they don't really have any roots or ties here, and they want to get home or get to somewhere else. We make sure that wherever they're going, that they're, it's already been vetted, that it's either a family member, they have a job waiting for them, or they're going to go to a treatment facility there. So, we do not just put anyone on a bus and send them to the next city or the next state and say, good luck. So, we make sure there's a plan wherever they're going. The jail diversion program, and I say jail diversion program, it's really, I call it more of a criminal justice diversion program. So, this is at the Class C level and at the misdemeanor level as well, and we work very closely with Judge Konzak out of the County Court of Law, Number One Court, she has a lot of the criminal trespass cases. And basically, what we have there is, if someone has the, now, they have to voluntarily do this, but if they would like to go a different route than the criminal justice system, and we have to get the court, and we have to get the DA's office to agree to it as well, we can get it to where it can vary from everything, from helping clean up campsites to they have to voluntarily go to a mental health or substance abuse or alcohol abuse treatment program, and they even have some other options that they, that they do as well to go around and use another tool besides the criminal justice system. And then it's just a general knowledge and communication. The post officers are out all the time talking with folks, creating new connections, making relationships, as Ms. Hill just talked about with Glow. Well, we've started, it was first one day a week, half a day a week, I think, to start with, and it's just grown now, they're actually out there two days a week, working together is what I call like a multidisciplinary team, where you have EMS, police, and your mental health workers all working together, and they're doing one, they're doing two things. One is actually when the call comes out, and if there's somebody in a crisis, they can go, but it's also looking at who are our frequent flyers, and if we can kind of intercept them where they're at, first of all, it's, it's a lot better setting for them, but it's also the resources that you save. When people don't have to go to the emergency room, when people aren't in a crisis where they're having to call the police or EMS, you're letting officers, you're letting the firefighters respond to the other calls that are emergency 911 calls. So, again, I can't give you a dollar number on what that is, but anytime you're freeing up calls for service, it's improving the entire system by doing that. And then just the traditional law enforcement tools also. And then, just the traditional law enforcement tools also. Sometimes people have to have a citation or go to jail, so that's, that's other tools that post has. Is this thing not working tonight? There we go. So, just to give you a little bit of the stats, this is last year, and this is, this year through August, on actual contacts by post, you can see the numbers there in the three hundreds and the two hundreds for this year. The, the housing or rehab or other placements, this is getting into some type of rehab program, a treatment program. You see, we're almost 100 last year, and we're already at 60 for this year. We talked about Homeward Bound already with 41 last year, 13 this year. And then, our jail diversions, 28 this year, and, or, excuse me, 28 last year and 20 this year. And again, those are very time-consuming. Again, they have to go and visit with the individuals, they have to see if they're on board, then they still have to talk to whether it's our local municipal court judge, or if it's our county judge, then they may have to go to the DA's office and work all this out. And then, there has to be follow-up too, to make sure whatever was agreed upon is continuing. So, it does eat up quite a bit of hours for just two people. And then, we already talked about the homeless IDs as well. There we go. Finally got it working, so. On the COPS grant, this all kind of tied back together. It was back in June when we applied for this, and just, this is straight from the COPS information. The COPS Office awards grants to hire community policing professionals, develop and test innovative policing strategies, and provide training and technical assistance to community members, local government leaders, and all levels of law enforcement. Since 1994, the COPS Office has appropriated more than $21 billion to help advance community policing. So, again, like I said, Laura and her crew had permission back on June 12th to apply for this, and it is a maximum of $125,000 per officer, and we applied for two positions. So, this is what the funding kind of looked like, and I'll, I'll explain why I've got the little asterisk there here in just a second. This is actually a table that, that the COPS grant sent back to us when we were approved for this. So, you can see that top line shows the $250,000, and it starts off at 125,000 in the first year, is what they'll reimburse us, then 75,000, 50,000 with the plan, and the hope that by the fourth year, that the, the city or whoever's been awarded this grant can absorb it. The local funding, you can see we're, we're down in the 50s on the first one, and it comes up to about 100,000, 135,000, and then by year four, we've absorbed it all. The only difference, obviously, in June when we applied, the budget was still being talked about for this year, so we did not have raises or anything. So, the total there is 544,800. That's actually about $20,000 higher now, as of October 1st, with the raises that council gave city staff. So, their amount does not change, because again, the max is $125,000 per officer, so it's $250,000. And then, our portion, as it shows in your paperwork there, is right at 564,000 total, leaving our part about 313,000 over the next three years. Again, this grant, the purpose of it is seed money to invest in our community and fund community policing models that improve quality of life. And with this, our intentions are to increase our post unit from two officers to four officers. And I think with the, the MDT model that we were just talking about, with the two people coming from Community Health Corps, with what Glow is already doing, and what the post officers are doing, I think it's just going to be, allow us to let, let us do that much more. So, with that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
It's very exciting. Questions or discussion for Chief? Go ahead, Joe.
When they come, go to see a post officer, do they have the same like safe harbor benefit too, as well?
It depends on the circumstances. So, if they go out to a campsite, they have several different options. Generally, the traditional law enforcement style is the last option that the post officer wants to use. That's why they even actually wear a different uniform than what, than like what I'm wearing tonight, is to try to make it where it's more approachable, where they can actually have that person open up to them, and they can actually figure out the roots of what's, what's going on, what's got them in that situation, to try to help them out of it.
What if they go to like the, the office of the post officer, which is at the train station, I believe, right?
Yeah.
So, if they go there, would they have that, or no, is it something?
They can still, yes, they can still work out what resources that, that best fit that individual with that, that particular scenario. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
My question was pretty, in regards to the cost, when somebody's trying to get a state ID and they go there, I know we've got a lot of avenues that people will jump in and help us. Is there any cost that's to those people directly, or do we have help to be able to get them the ID if they walk in?
On that part, there are some fees associated with actually getting your driver's license or an ID card, and most time, it's ID card. And there's actually means for them to, to cover that cost as well.
Okay. And, and I know you and I talked, and I appreciate you taking the time this week. And just kind of looking at, I know with our night court cases starting up, the 3rd of November, and, you know, QR code now on the back, and the, the things that we've got, that Bonnie pointed out earlier on the website, people can check, you kind of expect this to kind of see a big shift in what we're doing, enable, enable our officers to be on the street a lot more, rather than handling some of these.
Yes, sir. It's, we don't know the exact number. I think the last couple of years when we've done our homeless studies, or, or, it's kind of a population check in time, normally it's in January. I think it's been around 200, but there's still some, some locations we can't get into. Probably realistically, it's probably closer to 400. And then, that's not counting the folks that sometimes have a mental health episode as well. So, when you have a specialized unit that can be dealing with this and trying, again, those intercept points, catch somebody before it's a full crisis, that does free up resources to go out there and handle the other, the other calls for service that are occurring. So, again, I think it will, it will increase the resources that are available for EMS and police, and truly get folks the help that they need.
Well, I think between the combination, the partnership with the Health Corps and what we're doing with post officers, it's, it's a great step for the city.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, very exciting.
Chief, I do want to clarify, I did mean on that question regarding if they're going to get an ID. So, if they're going in there to get an ID, and then, you know, they're going to run stuff, and so, I didn't want to make sure.
Yes, sir. There's, there's several steps that they go through. In fact, and really, for the most part, someone has to be Texas-born for us to be able to help them with that, because we have to have the ability to, to track down where they're originally born. If they had a birth certificate from another state, it makes it a lot more difficult. So, but there are several steps, each one, they have actual checklists they go through first, to make sure that they confirm the identity before they issue the card that lets them go to DPS and get an actual state-issued ID card.
Okay. And then, I do want to share this, and I wish, taking some spotlight, I guess, from Glow on this side of things, so, and this is just an individual case, but it was one that was shared with us, was shared with me, and it was, it was a lady, I think was, my understanding was on the verge of homelessness, but she was a repeat caller to the 911. And they got a professional out there to help with that, and come to find out that she had a, a mental illness, I won't go into it, but it was some medical deal that caused that issue. And once they diagnosed her with that, they were able to put her on the right, you know, track medication, whatever they needed to do, and it corrected that. So, with all the stuff you're mentioning, between post, Glow, partners in prevention, and then also with what Ingrid's doing with the Connect Longview, all these different things that help prevent homelessness, and also helping the homelessness, I appreciate it.
And again, there, there are occasions when people have benefits, they may actually even have some, some type of funding coming in, that they just, with them moving and not being in an address, and not being able to prove who they are, it's, it's either stopped or not coming to them, or qualify for certain things. We've had people that have actually qualified for long-term nursing care, and, but just at the point, didn't have the right credentials to get all of that started and going.
Thank you.
Everybody else good? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
That's exciting. We're moving on to items of community interest. Oh, no, oh, I'm so sorry, please vote on that. Sorry, please vote on that.
Motion to approve.
Thank you. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Good work, team. Action item is approved. Items of community interest, Mr. Conley.
Yes, I'm, there we go. A few things happening at Pine Tree High School. We have Alice in Wonderland. You guys are looking for some very fun, family, reasonable entertainment. It looks like they have a show, they have a show tonight that's going in 30 minutes, if you guys can rush out of here and make that. Then, Tuesday, two on Sunday, and then also next Tuesday. So, about anybody to attend that one? Next is our Pine Tree Pride Band has, competes on Saturday, and they recently competed at regional, they'll be at Erie and Lyndale, and they got all ones. Congratulations to those guys, they do a great job. And next is the football game at Pine Tree Stadium. It's going to start here in about 55 minutes, so, Mr. Wade, you're invited.
Thank you, sir.
And they, big win last week against Henderson. Congratulations to Coach Balkman. And then, appreciate our city and real road has been a, let's just be honest, it's been a, it's been a mess, but we are communication. I'd like to thank city engineer Zach Shaner. And tomorrow, the, all the homes that are listed on that, on the map there, I think it's 113 homes, is that correct, something like that, will receive a flyer tomorrow that lets you know about progress, and what dates to expect things to be finished. Just looking briefly through that, there's also some dirt work that's going to be, make an inconvenience for some of the driveways. So, if you have a problem, contact the City of Longview, city engineer Zach Shaner, 903 237-1321 is his phone number. And then, just kind of overall, the, just looking through some dates, it looks like the north side paving should be done by Christmas, north side driveway construction a month later, and then hopefully return to two-way traffic in the fall of 2026. So, be patient, it's going to be a great, widen that road, it's going to be, make it travel better. But thank you for your patience, and I appreciate the City of Longview for extending these updates that'll happen, and expect those, and those homes tomorrow morning. Thank you.
Good. Ms. Moore.
Aye.
Okay. Mr. Wade.
Yes, Mayor, I have a few items. Is it okay with you, Newstead?
Can I bring the mic in?
I'm sorry?
I was just saying, the mic.
All right, yes. Halloween movie at the Rec at Broadland Recreation Center, my favorite place. Join us for spooky good time at Movie at the Rec on Friday, October 24th, at 6:00 PM at Broadland Recreation Center. This free community event will feature the 2019 animated film, The Addams Family. All right, everyone all together. One, two, three. Way to go, you Akeley. All right. Oh, they were going over their head? Oh, okay, all right. A fun, family-friendly favorite that's perfect for Halloween weekend. Come early to grab your seat and snacks. Concessions will be available for purchase. Don't forget to wear your best costume for a chance to win prizes in our costume contest before the movie begins. Thank you, guys, for that. Should be a good time. And that's it for me, Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. Newstead.
I'll piggyback on the Addams Family. The video that Parks and Rec did was really good. Like, I thought that was just a great job, much better than we did here today, but good job on the snapping. I also, I didn't send anything in, but I do want to say thank you to the Longview Public Library for the Honda Library. My son and I went again, we try to do it annually, and they do a better job each year. So, if you don't go, I mean, it is impressive. And so, just want to say, great job to Jen and her staff and team and all the volunteers. I think it, my son, it freaked him out, there was kids that were also there, that was, you know, dressed up and trying to scare him, and I think that messed him up a little bit. So, I think, I appreciate all the volunteers and everybody that's part of that. They need, it's a full effort, and I know they do a big job, and they're only closed two days, and then they're open the next day. I don't know how they got everything cleaned up so they can operate, but awesome job. Thank you. That's all.
That's very helpful.
All right. There we go. So, Green Street Recreation Center invites all seniors ages 55 and older for a day trip to Canton Straight Days, and that's going to be on Friday, October 31st. Going to be leaving from Green Street Recreation Area at 9:00 in the morning and return later that afternoon. Normally, this is for members of the Green Street area, but this has been opened up to the general public now, anybody 55 years of age and older, who would be interested in going to Canton, getting their shop on. This is a great opportunity, it'd be a great time to build relationships, meet people, and hopefully, we get you back and get you involved in Green Street Recreation. I know we've got a lot of things going on over there. And I've got to apologize to Debe Terry at Spring Hill. I sent her an address today, and I didn't check the right email, otherwise, I'd had pictures to go with this. But I want to congratulate the Spring Hill Girls volleyball team for winning their fourth district championship. The UIL state marching contest, the band out there has advanced again. And a couple of events that they have going on, November 6th at 10:00 AM, they will have a Veterans Day program, and I know even Pine Tree holds one as well. I encourage you, if you're a veteran in District 5, go to Spring Hill, see what it's about. They do a lot to educate your kids, and they're proud of what you did for us as veterans. It's a great time to combine the young and the old, like me, together. And lastly, on the 27th, at Spring Hill High School, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM, all you parents who have kids fixing to go to college, they're going to have a college night. And there'll be people talking about FASFA and how to fill out, and if you've ever done it years ago, it was a nightmare. But they're there to help you, there's going to be several universities from around the east Texas area there as well. A great opportunity for you as parents to kind of get ahead of the college road trip. So, that's it.
Awesome. Mr. Allen.
Doing just fine. Appreciate it.
So good. Is that it?
That's it.
All right. Anything from you? Okay. I have a couple of things tonight. We want to celebrate, as a community, a large investment that Longview Economic Development Corporation announced just after their meeting this afternoon. This is the largest project that Leadco has successfully recruited to Longview in their history. They just keep getting bigger and bigger. This project is referred to as Got Milk, and you'll understand why in just one second. Ninth Avenue Foods has decided to come locate their third facility here in Longview, Texas. Ninth Avenue Foods is a fourth-generation, family-owned and operated company with a longstanding history of quality and service in the dairy industry. The company constructed its new state-of-the-art ESL manufacturing facility in Columbus, Indiana, over the last two years, and has now selected us to be its third facility. They process, package, and store many dairy and non-dairy labels commonly found on our grocery store shelves. One of their key decision factors was Longview's abundance of available water and the city of Longview's ability to treat wastewater. I also would like to compliment our coordination of services. So, today, at the Leadco Board meeting, they celebrated that this project has evolved